Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of Education's work session today on November the 17th, 2020. We are discussing the opening, it's opening schools and recovery of education. And before we get started, I want to acknowledge my colleagues that are on the call today, and I'll start with Vice President Wolf. You just say you're here?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Asante?
Here.
Ms. Dixon?
Here.
Dr. Daka?
Here.
Mrs. O'Neal?
Here.
Ms. Avestra?
Here.
Mrs. Mandraski?
Good afternoon. Here.
Okay. And our superintendent, Dr. Jack Smith, I will turn it on to, turn it over to you to begin.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Today, we come to the board for this work session, once again, to talk about our plan to move back into physical spaces for students. Schools in session every school day right now, but we don't have students in physical spaces. And so, we've been talking about this now for the last few weeks and will continue today. I would be remiss, however, if I did not point out that as we speak, the governor is holding a press conference where he is moving the state back to Phase Two and significantly tightening what is happening in our communities and across our state in recognition of the circumstances in our communities across our state and across the nation right now in terms of the spread of the virus and the rates of positivity, the community transmission, and the number of cases each day per 100,000 residents of a community. And all of those, as well as hospitalization, intensive care, and certainly those people who die from the virus are all part of what the governor is looking at along with his advisors in this. And certainly, that does affect how we proceed in the coming days and weeks. I would say, and the board knows this, but I'll share it with, in this meeting for the sake of those who might be watching the meeting. Currently, many of the people you're going to hear from today are on every other week telephone calls with the leading health advisors for the state of Maryland, and all of the local health officers join those calls. Additionally, all school superintendents are on every Friday with leading health officers for the state of Maryland, and all local health advisors join those calls and are invited to them. I don't keep track of who joins, but I know that they're all invited. I also want to say something we've said repeatedly since the very beginning of this situation, and that is that we stay in constant contact with the local county government, as well as the local health officers that we rely on for updated information and for advice and medical recommendations in terms of how we proceed. All of those things are critically important. Many, many people have very different perspectives, views, opinions about this, and I understand that and respect that. I have no argument with anyone. But I also understand that as someone who works for the Board of Education, and the Board of Education and I, working together with the local and state officers at the Maryland State Department of Education, the Maryland Department of Health, and the local leadership and guidance, we are bound to all work together, and we should be on behalf of the 1,050,000 residents of this county and the over 6 million residents of this state, as well as our entire country, because our borders are porous. You can drive right now into multiple states within an hour out of Maryland, and that, everything shifts. So, we've got to pay attention. So, that's why we spend the time and energy and attention with a sense of urgency in communicating and conferring and collaborating with our health officers, our elected officials, and the people who are responsible for the safety and well-being of the residents of this county and the state. Certainly, one of the things that we've talked about is the school system, and I want to reiterate this today for our staff, and we'll be sharing this message with our staff also, again. And that is that there are many competing interests as we do virtual learning and as we try and provide for the care and well-being of students. And I know some people say, well, we should only be paying attention to student well-being, and others say, no, you're not pushing hard enough for rigorous learning. And others say, schools should stay closed for the rest of the year, while others say, we should open up today, no matter what happens. And we listen to all those voices, and we pay attention, and they're part of the conversation. But the fact is that I, as a person, and our students, and our staff members, and our families, have multiple needs and interests. And I equate this to the idea that as a human being, I need air, I need water, I need food, I need shelter, I need care, I need, I have a lot of different needs. And so, as staff members and as a school system, we want to make sure that we look at those needs and think about, all of them are important, all of them are necessary, but some come before others. For example, if I don't have oxygen for the next five to seven minutes, I won't need any more food, or water, or shelter, or care. And so, as we think about the well-being of students, I know our staff is out there trying their best to encourage and engage and support our students, because that's the, the oxygen that comes first. We also pay attention to whether or not our students are learning, and we don't ever say that this is preferable. So, we were going to come before you today to talk about recovery, and we're going to continue to do that. But we're going to do it in the context of the governor's press conference that is going on right now. And all of us need to understand and accept that we don't know what the coming days or weeks will look like. So, our plan now is to come back to the board on December 3rd. We may come back with a recommendation about how we'll move forward with opening. We may come back and say, we need more time, because we're working through what the governor is telling us. We just don't know at this time. So, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say that to our community right now. And so, we're going to continue on today with our presentation, but we're going to, we're going to color our remarks with the governor's press conference that's going on right now. So, if we sound tentative, or we sound uncertain, we are. And anyone in our society right now who thinks they know the future, I don't, I don't believe them. And if we get to that future and they were right, then they, they guessed, they guessed correctly. But the interesting thing I see in my world is, no one ever comes back when we get to that future and they were wrong, and says, oh, I was wrong a week ago, a month ago, a year ago, about what was going to happen. So, I just want to push on all of us, myself more than anyone else, to work together, to move forward, to think about the safety circumstances and, and situations of all of the people in this community, all of them, and how all that fits together to do what's best for our students. And I have to say that the board members have been amazing in your level of commitment and dedication and just spending time with us, week after week after week, to try to make the right decision. And the staff has been dedicated and committed to trying to move us forward. So, our plan is to be back with you on December 3rd. Our tentative plan right now is to make a recommendation about moving students back into schools. We're not changing that at this point, but I would be, I would be foolish if I, I didn't say the governor's press conference today is causing me angst about what's happening in the health circumstances and situations across this community and this state and nation. And so, we're going to proceed ahead today with these, with these issues and topics, and talk about them and work with them. But I don't want people to think we're making any commitments here about the future, because we're not. We just don't know. And we'll make recommendations to the board and work closely with the board, so the board has all of the information we have and can consider it all as decisions are made at the board table. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Dr. McKnight, and she will move us into the presentation and discussion around the various topics that are scheduled to be discussed today. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Smith, and good afternoon, board members. As Dr. Smith has shared, today, we're going to continue to dig deeper into looking at some different models and options for instructional delivery, as we have done for the past few board meetings. While the county health metrics contribute to aspects of safe operations of schools, we understand that the instructional delivery model needs to be adaptable and flexible to, most importantly, meet the needs of all of our diverse learners that exist in our school buildings, in our classrooms, in our system. And with that said, today, our staff has prepared examples of each of the models we discussed previously to help our community have a deeper understanding of the options that will support virtual and in-person learning. We also want to ensure that our community, that, ensure our community that virtual learning will remain as an option, even as we plan for a return to in-person learning. You will also hear an update on athletics and extracurricular activities, because we have heard you ask this question. And so, when you decide virtual or in-person, how that will impact these activities are so important to our students and you, and so, we'll have an option to discuss that today, or have an opportunity to discuss that today. We wanted to engage in a discussion that's going to help paint a clearer picture of the student experiences and consider what makes sense for you and your family as you engage in discussions as a family, to think about what makes sense for you, and how this is all going to impact your decisions and completion of the survey moving forward. And so, we hope that this discussion will be meaningful for you today, and I thank you to all who've sent us feedback and emails in regards to questions about the survey and models, so that we can engage with you further to make sure you have a clear understanding of that process. So, with that, I'm now going to turn it over to Mr. Turner, who's going to give us an update on our current health metrics. Mr. Turner?
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. As Dr. Smith shared, and you heard just moments ago, the governor's press conference, we continue to see significant increases in COVID-19 cases, not only in our state, but in our nation. For context, as it relates to the MCPS return to in-person model, I want to share our live MCPS COVID data dashboard. So, if the production team could raise that, that site. Thank you. As you scroll down, you can see our dash, live dashboard that is updated two times a day for context. So, as you can see, for our 14-day new case rate, it's currently outside of the metrics threshold for a safe return, as defined by MCPS, CDC, and the state. Right now, we are at 19.1, and again, we are outside of the threshold for the 14-day. As you scroll through the map, you'll find that we, as of today, we are outside of the, or at the 5% positivity rate, the MCPS threshold for eventual turn to in-person instruction for the Maryland and Montgomery County calculation. This is just important information that we need to have in mind as we think about our plan for return. The dashboard, as you can see, also includes an update of our employee testing, employees who are testing positive. As of yesterday, we have a total of 136 employees who have tested positive since March 16, and 17 employees who have tested positive that are currently in quarantine. And with that, I'll turn it over to President Evans and the board for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I will start with Mrs. O'Neal.
Yes. So, Mr. Turner, the 5.8% positivity rate, is that what you just said?
It's at 5%, exactly.
Okay.
In the early calculation, correct.
You know, as it's presented on the dash, I, I had clipped an article about New York City. That seems to be a major point that they highly focus on, on their dashboard. In fact, Mayor de Blasio, over the weekend, had indicated they were at 2.8%, and 3%, 3% was the threshold that would close the schools. I don't know whether they have today or not. But, you know, with all the data that, that's cross-referenced and swirling about, to me, it just seems if 3% is the, the line in the sand, because 3% indicates high community, or above 3%, high community transmission, that it would be important to call that specific number out separately. I mean, it is, you know, anyway, I just, I throw that out, because I, I watched Mayor de Blasio's press conference and saw all the various things, but that number was the number they focused on, that that crosses the line. And I know, at one point, I had heard Dr. Gales, that 3%, below 3% is a threshold that is really being used here in Montgomery County and, and across the state. Anyway, I may be wrong, but it seems like that number should be one that we focus on, because I think it's eas, more easily understood that in those terms of 3% and above, or if it's some other number that, you know, we're given guidance to. But it seems universally, 3%, is, is what other folks are using.
So, you're, you're correct. So, our baseline for our metrics are both the new case rate and the test positivity. And for, for, as the baseline, we have to be below the 5% for test positivity. And that's, that's the guideline that the state adopted, and that jurisdictions in Maryland are, are all adhering to. And right now, we are at that threshold, which is very concerning. You know, we can't predict the future, as Dr. Smith shared, but this is not a positive sign.
Dr. Daka?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Ms. Avestra?
Mr. Turner, I just wanted to ask if, in your discussions with our health experts, do you talk about the, the, I don't want to call it the fact, but what I've read, that schools are not primary places for transmission. The, the governor just announced the closing bars at 10 o'clock at night, because the data shows that those, those are hotbeds for transmission and infection. Yet, what I have been reading, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that schools that are open all over the coun, the country, show that there's not a whole lot of COVID case transmission happening, because schools are taking very careful safety measures. Could you speak about that? I guess, are we keeping schools closed in order to keep community spread from getting worse? And how do you all talk about that? Because as we know, school is essential, and in my opinion, should not be, it shouldn't be schools versus, you know. So, I'll stop there, see what, what your conversations on this topic are like.
And so, I can share, we, we've had those conversations around, you know, what, what roles do schools play in terms of, of transmission. And one of the things, we, we did have a conversation about, and we adjusted our health matrix, metrics, to actually give us a little more wiggle room in the five to 10 cases per 100,000, where we're now there in that kind of the orange range instead of the red, because we can see if the, the trend is going down, then we can start moving back faster. What we know is that school systems are, are part of a community. And so, we have to think about them in alignment with the students who are in the building, but the teachers, and the staff, and the parents, and all those interactions. So, I don't think we've, we've all seen the, the, the news stories about schools potentially not being super-spreaders. But again, we're talking with our health official and, and going to follow the local guidance, as we know about our community and, and what we're seeing. And if things change, we'll continue to come forward with revised models for the board.
Mr. Asante?
I have no questions.
Okay. Ms. Dixon?
I don't have any questions either. Thank you, President Evans.
Okay. Mrs. Mandraski?
Yes, thank you. Kind of following along those lines, you know, we haven't heard much about the learning hubs and childcare centers having significant problems, which, you know, to me, supports the idea of what we read about schools not being super-spreaders, as, as you refer to them, Mr. Turner. And as I've stated multiple times, you know, to me, school is an essential aspect of our lives, and, and what we, you know, our students, our mental health, our learning abilities, all of those things. So, I still have concerns about the multiple metrics. I still am hopeful that we are really monitoring what we already have happening in our school buildings, to, to use those as references for what the potential going forward can be and should be. I'm not sure if I'm saying it that right, in the right way, but, but unless we're hearing that the fact that we have opened, started the learning hubs and the child centers are providing huge increases, I do hope that we're keeping those as references to what we can be doing.
Certainly, we'll continue to monitor and follow the, the latest news and understanding about the science of the spread of COVID-19. I just, to clarify, though, we have had cases of, of COVID-19 in our childcare facilities, and we've had seen spread in small numbers of COVID-19 among employees who have been in buildings. So, while, while we're currently not a super-spreeder, and, you know, there's plenty of data suggesting that schools have not been super-spreaders to date, we have seen that the virus can spread in a school building and within a school facility.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. My fear is, is that it's going to be able to spread no matter where we are. You know, I hear stories about people who've done absolutely everything right, and still are, you know, getting this virus. It's a terrible thing, and I'm hopeful that, you know, we get a better handle on it sooner than later. But my concern is, is that it's with us for a very long time. And so, you know, we're trying to do everything we can to make sure that our students aren't ultimately suffering in the biggest sacrifice because of it. So, thank you.
So, seeing no more masks needed. Oh, Mrs. O'Neal. Okay.
Yeah. The issue in New York City, they do unlimited testing, and they have a 1% positivity rate among those tests in the public schools. Mayor de Blasio's point was, it's coming in from the community, it's not being spread from the schools. Schools are an essential business, should be deemed as an essential business. I mean, for me, I have a problem. I have an issue that I can go to a restaurant, I can go to a bar, I could get my nails done, get a massage, go get a tattoo, but children can't sit in school. And I think all of us are committed to, as, when it is safe and possible, we need to get kids back in school. I don't think anyone on this call disputes that. But, you know, the call about whether restaurants or bars should be open is not our call, but our advocacy should be finding a safe ways to get kids back in school. And all you have to do is turn on the evening news. Schools in Milwaukee are closing, schools in Michigan are closing for high school and college students. My, my great nephew in Colorado has been in a hybrid program for kindergarten, and now he's going all virtual. So, all school systems across the country are struggling with this, unless they just throw caution to the wind. We just have to find some way for us, schools, to be deemed an essential business and to focus that priority on getting kids back in school. But right now, I mean, I, I'm really concerned by the numbers that, you know, Governor Hogan just shared, I, every morning in the Washington Post. So, it's a terrible dilemma that we are in, and there is no perfect solution.
Ms. Evans? Okay. So, then after you were going to go ahead with the presentation, so that we're not here like a full business meeting. Go ahead, Mrs. Mandraski.
I just had a quick question about the testing aspect, and maybe you mentioned it, and I missed it, because I was taking some notes. But have we thought anymore about if we do open, how, whether it would be temperature-type testing or other testing metrics or options that we would be looking at? And have we started already looking at those things?
There is a lot of work going on across the state around that issue, both the taking of temperatures and in terms of testing. At this time, in the information we've been given in our meetings with the state health department, there's not adequate testing to be able to test widespread test administration in schools. Ms. McGuire, are there other details that you can share about where that conversation is?
Thank you. So, that's correct. As, as you're sharing, Dr. Smith, I think there is, if you just look at the numbers of trying to get everyone back into school and, and having those, those COVID tests available at that scale, there is question about that level of availability. In terms of temperatures, the guidance from the state that actually they updated as recently as the end of last week, did indicate that, that again, it is useful to have that as a symptom monitoring each day, but they did also emphasize that that can be done at home. And so, we are, again, just looking at ways to support that, and understanding that at a station is an important piece of this, but also understanding that we need to be able to support families and staff and their ability to do that. So, we're going to continue to have those conversations with the state as well, and with our local officials around how to implement that at scale.
Okay. So, we are going to continue with the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you. And I believe, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. McKnight, did you want to? Okay. So, thank you. I think what we did want to do was, and we can go ahead and bring up the slides, I believe, on slide four. And I think what we wanted to do was just begin to talk a little bit, again, revisit our conversation around the preparations that we are doing for, for our reopening into schools. If the slides are available, thank you. So, again, as we've shared, clearly, there are concerns around the metrics and the numbers. But even as we continue to monitor those and have the conversations that we're talking about with our health officials, our operational preparations are absolutely in progress. And we know that our primary priority right now is to position the system to be ready to respond as those community health conditions change. That is absolutely what we are doing, and we are well in progress with that. And an important piece of that has been the development and dissemination of training and guidance materials for our staff, both around personal health and safety, as well as practices and protocols that will need to be in place as we move towards in-person experiences, again, as conditions allow us to do that. That work is certainly ongoing. We know that, again, very little of what we're doing right now is sort of a one moment in time, and then you're all set. It's really ongoing. It's ongoing conversations with our community, with our families, with our staff. And again, as we all continue to understand the changing, evolving dynamics that we're engaged in. If we can go to the next slide. Certainly, we know that there's, again, when we talk about ongoing, the procurement of all of our health and safety and cleaning materials is absolutely ongoing. We are not stopping in our efforts to continue to be sure that we have robust inventory as we, again, move towards in-person experiences. And one of the really important things that we're doing is reviewing the options and testing them all for quality, cost, and effectiveness, as well as timeliness. What can we get that is effective and that we can work with quickly? All of the approved products, we work with our safety office, we work with the state regulations around how those materials should be, again, what their specifications are, and then we test them. We also are doing testing to be sure that they're going to be appropriate for the uses that we need them in our schools. A good example of that is, again, I know we've talked a lot about the air quality work that we're doing, and we'll be ready to give the board a more, a more updated status report on where we are with schools when we come back to in December. But one of the important pieces that we've been doing is to really test those air cleaning models. Are they quiet enough to have in a classroom? That's a really important question. We don't want something that works well, but is too loud to talk over. And then, of course, what is their effectiveness in terms of achieving the air quality standards that we need. So, we've been really doing a lot of hands-on testing, a lot of product sampling. And we're moving past that into, again, active purchasing of the products that we know are compliant with the health guidelines and will work for us, for our schools, and for our staff. We definitely have a very robust inventory, and as I said, we are continuing to, to increase that inventory with active purchasing in addition to the, what have become, I suppose, standard health and safety supplies. Again, we've worked very closely with our special education colleagues around the specific equipment that they will need to engage with students. That includes face shields, it also includes transparent masks for those situations where students and, and potentially teachers need to be able to see each other's mouths move. Goggles, gowns, shoe coverings, there are a range of specific care materials that, again, we are working closely with our special education colleagues, as well as colleagues around the state, to ensure that we have the materials that we need for any specialized programs, in addition to just having, again, the materials on hand that are quickly becoming standard in all of our onsite locations. If we can move to the next slide. We also are really moving deeply into working with our schools and our school leadership around preparing buildings. around preparing buildings. I know there was interest, and we talked about this before, in terms of what the model schools are that we're working with leadership to set up. And we're really excited to be in these schools. We very much appreciate the principals and all of the school administrative and instructional and operational leadership teams in these schools pitching together to dive in and help really operationalize this on the ground. There's a lot of work to do here, and we, again, appreciate being able to dive in with these schools. We do ask for people's patience as we work this through because, again, it is a continuing process. We want to be sure that we really understand how these various health and safety protocols operationalize in a school. And as you can see, we want to work across schools at each level to really understand, again, how the, each of those individual needs at the different levels impact how we need to set up and operate in a school. So again, we're really excited to be there. We're working closely with those teams. Operations is, of course, very happy to support, and this will be part of our continuing development and training resources for principals, as well as for our curriculum staff, our building services, and other operational staff. All of those pieces that make a school run are coming together to identify what the best practices are that they need to put into place, and then, again, how those pieces come together to support in-person preparation. So as we continue to, again, build out those resource materials, we will also be working with these model schools and then other schools in the area to share that experience, share that knowledge, and continue to build it out across the system. And the next slide, please. I do want to circle back to a conversation that we've been thinking about relative to transportation. As, as everyone certainly knows, the transportation question of how to accomplish distancing on a school bus is a very critical one. What we know are that our initial assumptions really centered around one student in every other bus seat. That limits our bus capacity to about 11 students, which is just under 25% of our normal practical capacity. And there is a concern that depending on the numbers of students that would like to come back to school in person, that that reduced capacity could very seriously impact our transportation operations. What we also do know is that while the distancing is important, the vast majority of districts in this area, and frankly, in other areas as well, are using a one-student-per-every-seat model. That would limit our capacity to about 22 students, which is still a significantly reduced capacity. It's right about 50% of our normal capacity, but it certainly would increase our ability to provide transportation to all school levels. And so we just really feel the need to enter into this conversation to really understand what are the best practices and what are the operational models that are happening around us, and what is the context for providing transportation, again, as we move towards an in-person experience in the coming months. If we can move to the next slide, I just want to, again, emphasize what our core safety practices are in transportation will be implemented in any operational model. We do have high-power sprayers to really disinfect each bus following each day of use. Bus staff will address and disinfect high-touch areas in between each route, each load of students. Of course, we also have safe loading and unloading practices so that students are walking by each other as little as possible and not constantly crossing back and forth in the bus. Bus staff will, of course, conduct a health assessment each day as well, and face coverings and hand sanitizer, as always, form those staple foundational elements of our health and safety practices. And so, and so that does conclude the operational section. We wanted to move to talking about an update on community feedback unless we wanted to pause and pause for any questions on these operational updates. Mrs. Evans, would you like us to continue?
I'm sorry. You know what? Go ahead and continue. I can't see everybody, so I can't tell if anybody has any questions to ask. Let me see. Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Mrs. O'Neill and Miss, hold on, Ms. Dixon, and then we'll go with Mrs. O'Neill.
Yeah, you know, just a quick question about the mask. Will we have, you know, a supply that schools can have to give to, you know, kids who, for some reason or other, don't have a mask? Or that's, yeah, that they'll have in the main office?
Absolutely. Yes, we absolutely, 100% have, our intent is to have more than enough inventory to cover everyone in the school, plus any visitors and anyone else who comes. So we certainly expect and support folks wanting to bring their own face coverings because often we have ones that we're comfortable with. But we absolutely have enough to allocate multiple to every student and staff member during the year, as well as disposable, as well as, again, some of the specialized masks that we may need in specific situations. So 100%, if you walk into an MCPS school and you need a mask, we have one for you.
Yeah, that'll be great. I was in Wegmans yesterday, and I was surprised that they had a sign-up that if you needed a mask, they had them in the front there. And they were very nice, you know? One was like a Maryland flag, another was the US flag, you know, that went over your face and things like that. But, yeah, so I think we're going to have to, you know, more businesses will probably have to get into that as well. Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. O'Neill and then Mr. Sante.
So on the transportation piece, when we communicated to parents and we did the survey, did we indicate, you know, or ask for their, you know, what, do you need, will you continue to need transportation? Because that really is going to be key. And then on the mask piece, I just, I had a tip from someone where a child, where kids were in a private school, that they requested all the children wear lanyards. So when they did take their mask off to eat, they connected their mask to the lanyard. So it, one, it didn't lay on the table, but also it was always with them.
That's an interesting idea. Thank you for that. That's a very interesting tip. I appreciate that. And on the transportation piece, we absolutely are asking parents to indicate whether they need transportation. As you said, that is a very critical element for us in our planning. And so we very much encourage and appreciate parents indicating if they do have a need or an interest in their student riding the school bus, please indicate that on your transportation form. We will, because of the reduced capacity in any model we adopt, we will have reduced capacity on the bus. We are going to need to be very intentional planning and making that connection between students who need transportation and getting those students to school. We want to provide a seat for every student who needs it, but we won't be able to just sort of have the open-ended routes that we have now. We will need to definitely have that specific seat assignment for students. So please do indicate your transportation need when you fill out that question. Thank you.
Mr. Sante and then Vice President Wolf.
Yeah, I mean, I was just wondering if you guys have any anecdotal, anecdotal information from other school districts about how, I guess, bus drivers are managing, making sure students are, you know, sitting one per seat, wearing their mask and all of that stuff? Or is that something bus drivers are having difficulty with in other school districts? Or have they managed to do that so far?
So we definitely are in frequent contact with our, with our colleagues, and now more than ever, we are always interested in what other people are doing. But in general, you know, we are finding that people are having good experiences with their, certainly, you know, students behaving as needed and following the guidance that is requested on school buses. You know, I think, I think folks are understanding that this is the environment we're in and that following the protocols is important and needed. So we haven't had any specific concerns around that kind of, you know, disregard for guidance.
All right, thank you.
Vice President Wolf.
Yes, my question goes back to the parents asserting that the child is okay. You know, this has been a concern of mine. I wanted to know, had you done any comparison with comparable-sized school districts and whether you know, do you know whether any school districts are taking temperatures as the kids come in? Now, I know we're large, so it would have to be a comparable school district, but do you have any information about that?
So it is our understanding that a lot of the large systems are relying on at a station, and again, then on addressing any symptoms that do appear at school, dealing with them in the school health context. You know, certainly, again, it's an important question, and we know that we need to be able to provide supports to, to ensure that folks understand that, again, this is a, it's an effort that is important to protect us as a community. So certainly, some of the large systems, I certainly don't want to say that no large system is doing it, but many of them are relying on the at-a-station approach. Dr. Smith, do you have more specific?
I was just going to say, in our conversations with large systems across the country at a consortium, as well as our conversations with all the school systems in Maryland, there's been a lot of discussion about taking temperatures. And what people have found is that it's very, very hard to do consistently and reliably. And so as Ms. McGuire said, we're exploring ways that we can support families in their home in knowing for sure when they fill out that at a, at a station, that they're attesting to what they're saying is accurate. One thing we do know is that in school systems across the country have reported this, that consistency is particularly important in this. Essentially, if a student's family does not attest, then they should not be allowed to come into the school. That's, we do know that. And, and school systems have not reported, back to Mr. Sante's question, serious problems in getting kids to wear masks, serious problems in getting kids to stay in the right seat on the bus, or problems with getting families to attest. Those have not been the areas that have been particularly difficult for school systems so far. Taking temperatures has been very difficult for school systems when they've tried it.
Mrs. Smundrowski?
Yeah, just two quick questions. Number one, a lot of parents have asked me, in terms of the survey, if you're locked in, because particularly now, like with what the governor said today and everything, people want to make choices, but they want flexibility, and they're concerned that there isn't any if they say they're going to stay home virtually, and then all of a sudden the numbers get better and they decide they want to send their kids, or vice versa. Are we looking at that at all?
Yes, as we shared in the last meeting, it'll be much more difficult to say, I'm going to go all virtual, and then in the middle of third marking period, if we have students back in school, to say, oh, well, wait, I want to come back in right now. We will build in as we phase, but it's not going to be the case where, right now, a parent can say, well, I'm going to withdraw my child from this private school, or, or I don't want my child to homeschool tomorrow, I want to enroll, they can enroll tomorrow. And it will not be that quick to move into a school. Obviously, when they want to move to all virtual, that will be much easier and less cumbersome. So that's why we've encouraged parents, because we have to plan for the ratio of students to staff.
Right.
It doesn't mean never, it just means it won't be as fast or as simple as it has been in the non-COVID world.
Right, okay, I appreciate that. But so then along those lines, we received an email from someone asking about considering a model where the students would remain in one room and the teachers would switch. I don't know if that's being done other places, or if that's something that we've been considering, but it might help us also in the aspect of doing the count and not the hall room, the hallway transferings and all of that other kind of stuff. I think it's a good idea, so.
All of the, the models really do rely on very limited mixing of cohort groups of students. And obviously, that's easier in the elementary school, it's easier in the self-contained classroom than it is at the upper levels. But all of what we will build will be restricting the number of people that interact with, with groups of students or groups of adults on any given day. It's going to have to be that way.
Okay, so that means you are looking at that, right?
Yes, very close.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Sante.
Oh, I forgot I knew, sorry.
Okay, so I want to make sure, Ms. Bestra, did you have any, you have a question? Okay. Did I miss anybody before we move on? Okay, seeing none, we can continue with the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We will continue with Dr. Redmond Jones. Turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. If we could have the next slide. So just wanted to give a brief update on the community feedback that we've received so far with the parent preference survey. On the slides, you see some of the initial numbers of the responses that were received as of our first poll. And just prior to this board meeting, we got even some additional updates. So currently, we've received 35,216 preference, preference surveys. And of those received, 15,953 would prefer virtual only, and 19,263 prefer a partial in-person experience. So we've continued to publicize this in multiple ways, through text messages, through the principals at the schools, and through emails. Principals also receive an updated report every Tuesday and Friday that lists the students who, whose families have not saved a preference yet, and they also get their numbers in terms of those who have saved a preference, how many have selected all virtual, or who have selected an in-person experience. So we just wanted to give you those updates.
Can you clear those numbers again? I'm sorry.
Sure. So to, so to date, and just, this is just prior to this board meeting, 35,216 have responded, and all virtuals, 15,953, and partial in-person, 19,263. And we do, yes, sure, we, and we do update these reports for principals on Tuesdays and Fridays.
So.
Go ahead, Mrs. O'Neill.
Okay, so just some feedback that I heard from some community members, that when it says "survey," it really is an election or a selection process, and that parents may, some people may not have felt a sense of urgency about responding. I mean, that's just feedback. But then also, I shared with Mr. Turner, I had a couple of emails from people who had withdrawn their students from MCPS and were homeschooling, no longer had student ID numbers, and, you know, or were in private school. And so there was no way for them, with this initial version, to, you know, respond in the survey. And he, Mr. Turner, said you all were working on that, but I just thought I would throw that out there for public discussion.
Yes, Mrs. O'Neill, we do have a draft now of the survey, which is very similar to the survey that went out to our currently enrolled students or any students who are in non-public schools, who recently, were recently enrolled in non-public, and also for homeschool students as well. So they will, those families will have the opportunity to respond via a survey. And Mr. Turner might have, want to talk about the first question you had about the word, the term "survey."
So we have heard feedback that survey has confused some, some parents, but we encourage them to, to listen to the conversation and to, in the first paragraphs of our parent guide, it really describes the importance of making your selection to move forward. And as we continue, we are going to be making, you know, hundreds and thousands of calls, and there's a postcard that's going in the mail as of today. And so they're going to get this information in so many ways. And if they have questions about the survey, whether they think it's, they need to fill it out now, or they want to wait or have questions between the time, they can reach out to us via email, by phone, and we're ready to support them.
Vice President Wolf.
My question goes to the communication about the survey. I had heard about it on TV, as has everybody, but I wonder, for those people who had either withdrawn or not in a school system, as Ms. O'Neill was just talking about, could you also share with the TV stations that there is going to be a survey coming out for them so that they will know that it's available, because otherwise they might miss it, and all they've heard about is the one for students who are in school?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Evans, if I may, if I may add to the conversation about the, the parent preference survey, one of the reasons that we're providing the report weekly to the principals, and they're getting, as, as Dr. Redmond Jones said, they're getting both the students who have
have already indicated their preference so that they can begin planning, and they are also getting the report, of course, then, of students who have not yet indicated their intention. We will be asking, well, we have asked that the wellbeing teams and the academic teams are engaged to do the reach out as we go along, to make sure that everyone has their eyes on responding to the survey. So there will be that intimate touch point, if you will, from the school level for each of our families.
Okay, so before we, okay, Ms. Vestry.
So if I'm a busy, working parent, I don't have time to watch board meetings to get all the nuance about what the reopening, the, the plan is, is the Family Guide the best resource to help me make an informed decision for my child?
So the Family Guide is an excellent resource, and we've gotten some good feedback about the guide. In addition, last Thursday night, we did a virtual town hall and answered questions live about different aspects of the reopening, and so that reporting is also available on the MCPS website.
Is there any plans to consolidate that into like a promo, so I don't have to watch an hour and a half video in order to learn everything that happened, just kind of the, what were the frequently asked questions, and can we put those more readily available? I mean, I just, people don't have time to watch hour and a half, two-hour videos to find out all the details, and, you know, it's not in all languages, I don't think. So just anything that you can do to, just make it more accessible. It's a lot of information, and I just want to make sure that parents have the information that they need in order to make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vestry. If I may, Ms. Evans, just wanted to comment. One, one of the reasons we decided after each board meeting to send out a, an email blast to the community was to be able to highlight the main points from the meeting for those families who don't have a chance to tune in, and then the guide was to supplement that. So we appreciate what you're bringing forward, because even how we craft the community message afterwards, if we have a component of FAQs or things to just get at the main part of the discussion, we can see how that can be helpful to the community. But that's definitely one, one measure of several that we've taken into consideration about that.
I was just gonna add, I get text messages from MCPS about filling out the survey, and after the virtual conversation, and there's a link that you can click on, and it just gives you like a couple of, like, brief topics that, that were discussed under each one. So I think it's just probably a matter of how parents have made a decision to get information from MCPS, because I get text messages, I get emails, I get stuff through Canvas, my personal emails. I just wanted to state that, as a parent of two kids at the Montgomery County Public Schools system, I get a lot of notices. So I don't know if everybody knows that, I just wanted to say that. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Sante, who has a question.
It wasn't a question, just a suggestion for the survey. Would it be possible to put the metrics table itself in the survey? Because I know in the survey, just ask the grade number, the student ID number, and what your option is, would you be able to put an image of the metrics table that you've developed onto the survey itself, so people can see that too when making the decision? I know it's in the messaging, but like Ms. Vestry said, not everyone's gonna go through and click the links, including the messaging. So it'd be, would you be able to insert that onto the survey itself?
So we could.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Turner.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so is that all the questions from my colleagues? Okay, no one muted mics, and we will allow you to continue on the presentation.
Thank you. The next person is Mr. Lous.
Good afternoon. If we can have the next slide, please, and it's great to be here today to update everyone on the assessment centers and the discrete program phase in going back. So to update the board today on the, the assessment centers, the Office of Special Education has gone out with the facilities, and with security, and with food services, and we've visited all the schools and with all the principals, and they have been fantastic as far as being very welcoming and open to the assessment centers taking place in their buildings. I want to remind folks that this is going to take place at three middle schools, Halle Wells Middle Schools, Julius West, and Sligo Middle School. And we've looked at the facilities and the entrance, and where we can bring our staff, our students, our families into the buildings in a, in a safe manner. We have 10 classes set up. Facilities have been fantastic. Today, when we visited Halle's Wells this morning, the safety, PPE, and other things are already in the buildings and ready to go. And we're currently working with Office of Human Resources to, to fill some of our positions of our teachers during the day, knowing that many of our teachers are, are teaching during the day and won't be able to assess students. But we are going to be open after school, and we're going to be until 7 o'clock, and on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. So if our stu-, teachers would like to come in and test their students, they'll be able to do that after school, and on the weekends, and they'll be able to get a stipend for that. And we're very happy to announce that Division of Food and Nutrition Services is going to be providing snacks for our students while they're there. Next slide, please. So I want to remind everyone of the different phases of, of the special education discrete programs. And when I say discrete programs, I'm talking about our students that receive their education within a self-contained classroom. Many of our special education students are with their general education peers throughout the day, and I'm not talking about those students that receive their, their education with their general education peers. I'm talking about the, the students that are in self-contained classrooms with a special education teacher for the majority of the day. And when we look at Phase 1, we were talking about January 12th, and once again, we're talking January 12th, if the metrics allow us to go in at that time. And so we're working very closely with SC and Facilities and, and Department of Health and Human Services, and looking at the metrics and making sure that it's going to be safe to come in during that time period. The Phase 1 students are most vulnerable students that have the most difficult time accessing distance learning. They have the most difficult time with the technology, they need, many of them need behavior supports to be able to access the instruction, and so that, those are our students that, programs we will be bringing in January 12th. If we can go to the next slide, please. Okay, when we bring the students back and the programs back, we're looking at a consistent classroom cohort model. And when I say that, I'm, I'm talking about two classes working together. I want to remind folks that when we talk about the discrete programs coming back in Phase 1, we're talking about a small teacher-to-student ratio, and many of these programs have class sizes of six students to one teacher to two peer educators. So we have a limited number of, of adults and students when we come back, but we're going to team them up into two classes so that our adults can support one another when they need help and support throughout the day. Because many of these programs receive other supports from the outside during the day. And so we want to eliminate the need to bring in additional adults from outside the classroom with the, because we want to eliminate the opportunity for the COVID virus to come into the classrooms and to actually leave and then spread front to other areas once, if someone coming in leaves and goes and works in another area. So we're gonna limit the amount of staff that will be working with the students, and we'll bring in an extra staff member within these cohorts to help provide for breaks for the peer educators and for the teachers throughout the day. If we can go to the next slide. So we're getting many questions about where these cohorts will be located, and many of these discrete programs already are located in buildings that have been adapted for their needs, and their facilities have been adapted with bathrooms close by to classrooms and other facilities that are needed throughout the day to help our students with their learning. And so we're looking at the schools that currently hold these discrete programs, but we do have a, a, a strong understanding of that not all of our students will be coming back, and therefore, we're going to be having a, a limited number of schools that will be needed, a, a smaller number of schools in the current amount that we, we hold all these programs. And so what, it's very important that our parents of the students that attend these discrete programs that are coming back in Phase 1, fill out that survey and let us know whether they're coming back or not. Because it's important that we have amount, the right amount of support for the right amount of students that are coming back, so that we can team up these classes and have cohorts within the, the schools. Now, if every student wanted to come back, obviously, we would use all of the schools that we currently are using to house these programs, but what we're learning from other school districts is that around 60% of the students within these discrete programs will probably come back, and therefore, we'll then look at and work with facilities as to how best to place these programs throughout the county, to make sure that our transportation will be short as possible, but still be able to use the, the right amount of classes to support the adults that are teaching within these programs. We can go to the next slide, please. So many of the students within these programs receive additional services. They receive speech, they receive occupational therapy, physical therapy, as well as they receive the specialty classes that all students receive, such as PE, art, and, and other specialty classes. And with the attempt to limit the amount of adults coming in to these consistent class cohorts, we're going to have to look at bringing in additional technology to these classes to be able to provide the related services and the specialty classes in a remote way. And so we'll have an area set up within the classes to have some webcams and the opportunity to, to interact with the related service providers and the specialty teachers within the classroom, without actually having those folks enter the classroom. That we have learned through, through all of the research that we've done on the best way to bring in related services and to bring in our specialty classes, to keep the staff and the students safe within these cohorts of students. Obviously, there's going to be times where someone's going to have to go in to these classes, or we're going to have to bring students out to get some type of related services. And what we've learned is that really should not be a consistent practice, it really should be one that's periodic in nature, and that should be done when it's really needed. But we really should be looking at offering more of a remote services and specialty classes when in all possible. Next cla-, uh, next slide, please. So, so that's really, I wanted to give you an update on what the cohort classes would look like. I know Dr. Daca last time asked a little bit, to get a little bit more clarity on what that would look like, and so that was the intent today.
Okay, perfect. So we will start with Dr. Daca. Dr. Daca, you have any questions?
Yeah.
No? You got everything answered? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
Okay, we'll go to Mrs. Smodrowski. You look, yeah, okay. Okay, so I think maybe no one has any questions? I, I won't go to everybody if you don't. Okay. Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to have Scott Murphy come and talk a little bit about the, sorry about that.
What was that, Ms. Vestry? She was, I didn't catch her. Go ahead.
I can't wait to hear what Ms. Evans.
So is it related special education? Because you can go now.
Well, what happens if, what happens with the special ed assessment that we plan on starting in December if the health metrics improve drastically? What happens if, worst-case scenario, the metrics don't improve until there is a vaccine that's widely disseminated? Are we planning a Plan B for the worst-case scenario? I'm assuming that children need to be assessed, and I, I just want to make sure that we're planning for best-case scenario, which is a reopening plan, but also the worst-case scenario. What are your thoughts about that?
So thank you for asking that. We are planning for a Plan B. So, so first of all, let me just say that what we are telling our teachers and our administrators is that there are informal assessments that they're able to do, and that if the informal assessments are telling schools that a student qualifies for special education services, or points to students, now, continue to qualify for special education services, then go ahead and qualify them, and continue with the special education services. Do not at this time take away special education services for a student that is already qualified, because we really do need formal assessments to let us know whether a student no longer qualifies. The other thing is, is that what, we've been talking to some of our other school districts, and some of our other school districts have looked into hiring an outside firm to come in and be able to offer some formalized assessments in the virtual world that they've been able to figure out how to do. And so we are looking at that, and we will bring that future to the board with an, if we're not able to go in.
And along those same lines, what about the, the Phase 1 groups? If, worst-case scenario, we're not able to open for the rest of the school year, what's the plan for them?
Well, if we're not able to open the second week of January, then we will come back with another projected date and time, and we will just continue to look at that. We, we talk about best case and worst case all of the time. In fact, it's on the top of our SLT agenda that we look at in every area, not just this area. But we also don't want to theorize too far in the future and cause people to think that we've made a decision now about, you know, three months, four months, five months from now, when, when we have it, we've just, we, we look at it, we gather information from many, many sources, and then we come back and formulate what we believe to be the best recommendation at this moment to move forward. And so when we come back in December, we'll, we'll certainly be talking about what the second week of January may look like, and we'll know a lot more at that point, even though it's only three weeks away. We'll know a lot more about what it does look like. So.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice President Wolf, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. You've talked about hiring, possibly hiring an outside firm that is doing virtual assessments. Have these assessments been validated for virtual, to be done virtually?
So right now, we're in the process of just talking to these other districts that are, that have found that. We haven't really, that, that's one of the questions that we have. And so, like I said, we're looking into it as our Plan B, to make sure that we're, we're looking at everything to help make sure that we're able to provide assessments if we're able to do so. Hopefully, we can get in December 3rd and be able to do it ourselves, because we really would. It makes it easier for our teachers if they do the, if we do the assessing, because we can actually talk to one another and, and discuss what the assessments are saying, and, and get some really good information to help us determine whether students are qualified for special education services.
Okay, because I would just be concerned about the validity of them. Thanks.
Unfortunately.
And we are also.
Unfortunately, in the environment we're in, there are lots of things that are put forward quickly, and, and claims that they work, and they don't. And then we discover that. There are lots of things that people immediately say, no, we could never do that, and then we continue to research, and we find out there is a way to do it. And so that really is that discovery process that we're in as we move forward with this effort, that, that's really, and part of that is, is testing, you know, stress testing ideas, effectiveness testing, cost testing, all of those sorts of things, so that we know what will work to the greatest degree possible when we bring it forth as a recommendation, and when we begin to implement it. And that's just, that's the, the challenge of this time of absolute ambiguity.
Okay, so can I ask board members if you have a question, that put a thumbs up, so I can't tell who has a question? I don't want to call on you if you don't. Okay, so seeing no thumbs. Doing another look. I don't see anybody. Okay, so we can continue on. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Scott Murphy, Director of College and Career Readiness. If we could go back to the slides. Next, we're going to begin getting into some, some specific examples of what some of these in-person experiences could be. in-person experiences could look like. But before we do that, I wanted to provide an update on some of the current efforts that have taken place throughout the fall, especially for our seniors and around, around making sure that they have opportunities around college and career readiness while we're here in virtual learning. So first, an update on the SAT. We've had now three successful administrations of the SAT, once in September, October, and November, which totaled over 4,000 MCPS students who took the test on one of those dates. This not only provided those opportunities for students, but we now, now have experiences with these kinds of in-person experiences in our schools, especially the health and safety protocols. So for the SAT, we now have experience with some of what Ms. McGuire talked about earlier with the provisioning of face coverings and sanitizer, with arrival to school, with distancing in classrooms, with preparing our facilities, and really tight coordination across the Office of Teaching Learning in Schools and also with operations. Really want to congratulate and thank the school-based coordinators and proctors who just did an outstanding job making this happen over the last three months. We do have next up, still planning for, but as, as we've talked about tonight, the health and safety conditions will dictate, but we are still planning for the, another December 5th SAT, an ACT in December, and also a PSAT opportunity in January, again, if and when we are able, able to do so. Next slide, please. Some updating on now in marking period two, just still talking about virtual learning. We are also in the process of constantly making adjustments and tweaks to the design based on feedback that we're hearing and the work of our design teams. You know about the adjustments to the elementary schedule that was discussed in recent meetings and are now in place. At the secondary level, we know that the pressure that students and teachers are facing as it relates to covering the content in virtual learning, this is especially pronounced in subjects like math and in AP and IB courses and others that have external tests. As a result, adjustments in pacing in mathematics and in English has occurred, and we're also in the process of gathering feedback about how the secondary student and teacher experience is working or not working. Based on this feedback, we'll work towards making adjustments responding to that feedback, certainly for the start of the second semester. But in the meantime, for marking period two right now, there are some more immediate adjustments being considered with some of our guidance that we've sent out as it relates to grading and reporting, particularly with the volume of graded assignments that students have. So we are right now gathering feedback about some of those potential, potential adjustments to secondary grading guidance that would include a couple of areas. One would be not counting the MCPS progress check, the required district assessment in English and math, which right now is required 10% of the grade. So we're getting feedback about whether to alleviate that weight and relieve some of the pressure around counting that assessment for the grade. The assessment's important, particularly as a diagnostic tool in ELA and math, but right now it's counting for 10% of the grade, which is adding to the pressure. We're also looking at the range and the number of graded assignments that students have each marking period. We've heard loud and clear the, at times, excessive workload that students have. We want to address that by potentially adjusting the range of the graded assignments that teachers are giving in each course, in each subject. Also, we want to ensure some flexibility with due dates and deadlines for students and a perennial issue around the use of zeros when students do not turn in work versus implementation of the 50% rule. So we're in the final stages of gathering input around those areas, and we'll communicate back to the board about next steps. So that was a summary of just kind of the where we are now with virtual learning. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moran to, to start taking us deeper into the design of the in-person instructional experiences if and when we can. Dr. Moran?
Can I just interject for one second? Mr. Murphy, thank you for so much, thank you so much for that. Mr. Murphy mentioned earlier our plans about the December 3rd, as we've always planned for the SAT administration. If there are any changes that occur due to any health metrics or any advisement from our state or local officials around that, we will definitely plan to communicate that. And so we're hoping to be involved in discussion so that we can communicate with everyone around the status of the December 3rd SAT administration this week. Thank you. Sorry about that. Mr. Murphy, you all may continue. Dr. Moran?
All right, thank you, thank you, Dr. McKnight. If we could go back to the slides, please. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Good, good to be here with you today. So we know the board has seen this slide in previous presentations to show how we are orienting our thinking on designing and sequencing student groups for providing in-person instructional experiences. For the benefit of those who may not have seen this, we want to bring to your attention the current surveys that have been sent to families again. Just, all parents have received a survey asking if they would like for their child to participate in any in-person instructional experiences we're able to offer in the coming months. This information about who wants to participate in an in-person experience and who wants to remain virtual for second semester will determine our instructional design. And I do want to just, back to the, the previous conversation about collecting this information, we're going to be working closely with our schools to engage with parents around completing these, this, this preference survey. That's where the relationships and connections lie, so it's important. With the parent conferences upcoming next week, that's a great opportunity for us to, to engage our parent communities and encourage them to complete those, those preference surveys. However, today, we're going to focus in on the how that you guys see in this chart, of course, by providing more information about what the in-person instructional experiences can look like based on different variables. Next slide, please. As we have previously shared, all students will be able to remain in a virtual-only experience for second semester if they choose. Next slide, please. So today, we will focus on sharing more about what the in-person and virtual combination could look like for our teachers and our students. Again, these instructional models are the academic support model, the simultaneous model, and the direct instruction model. Next slide, please. So we have shared our approach to phasing in student groups for the opportunity for in-person engagement. And I want to point out that the timing of the phases does depend on the health metrics, as Dr. Smith mentioned when he opened this up. The timing of when students will be able to access in-person instruction will depend on the number of students who request in-person engagement and the staff availability. I'll talk more today about how schools will design their approach to providing in-person engagement. However, it is important to note that as we are asking families if they desire an in-person experience for second semester, a high student demand may result in a need to prioritize our students who need in-person engagement the most. Next slide, please. So at this time, I'd like to take a moment to provide a high-level explanation of how schools will use the survey results to design their approach to providing in-person engagement. Following December 3rd, schools will receive a full list of students that have selected an in-person instructional experience, along with staff that qualify for accommodations and therefore cannot participate in an in-person instructional experience. Utilizing this information and direction from the school system on which student groups are in phase one, schools will engage in analysis of the number of students they can serve in person and make determinations of which instructional models to implement for these particular students. Again, it is important to note that schools will serve as many students in person as they can, considering health metrics, staff availability, and space limitations due to the need to keep class sizes low in accordance with health and safety guidelines. This means there may be a need to use alternating schedules and/or prioritize students within the identified phase student group. There may also be a blend of instructional approaches across a student's day, as we realize we will need to combine the virtual and in-person models to program for a student day. For example, a secondary student may come into school for two classes taught in a simultaneous model and then be supervised in a support model to engage in the remaining classes virtually. We will talk more about what the instructional models to match the needs of students and accounting for staffing can look like after Mr. Murphy shares an example of what in-person instruction could look like from a programmatic perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. We could go to the next slide. So you've heard previously, an important part of the initial startup, whenever we're ready or able to, this slide says January, but as we've talked about, we are planning for the, the if and when we can. But the priority is providing opportunities for some of the in-person experiences in some of our career and technical education programs, starting with these types of programs that are more hands-on with the specialized labs, tools and equipment, facilities. These in-person experiences are vital in helping our students, especially our seniors, prepare for industry certification and licensure exams and help them make decisions for their next steps after high school. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to do now is go a little deeper into what programmatic delivery could look like as we phase in these in-person experiences, using career and technical education as an example. As Dr. Moran mentioned, this is built on that framework of three possible models, the support model, the simultaneous model, and the direct instruction. This example for CTE shows that there is not a one-size-fits-all design, as different models could be, could be implemented for the same program based on different variables, such as how many of those students prefer in-person, the availability of staff, and what the capacity of a facility is. So for example, let's take the automotive or construction program at Thomas Edison High School of Technology. Assume that some students wish to remain virtual while others prefer in-person. That could set up either a support model or a simultaneous instruction or a blend of the two. In both of these scenarios, the teachers, the teacher could teach from their classroom and be able to conduct demonstrations in the lab for students both in-person in the classroom and those attending on Zoom. This could be applied to either a support model or simultaneous instruction. At designated times, students in-person would access the equipment, apply what they have learned in the hands-on setting, while students at home continue with virtual simulations. In the support model, the teacher would continually, continue to teach virtually while other staff supervise the in-person hands-on work. Or vice versa, the certified teacher may need to lead the demonstration on the equipment while other staff engage with students virtually. This is to show how there is flexibility built in, and again, not one-size-fits-all. In some cases, there may even be a class in which 100% of the students wish to come to school for in-person, and there's a large space, such as the automotive lab, and those conditions may lend themselves to a direct teaching model for the entire class. In each of these examples, students would attend the rest of their classes virtually, but while in the building and with available staff, technology, support. Again, this is to show that these models can vary and be blended for program delivery. Next slide, please. Another example of program delivery with different models could be AP or IB courses. Similar to the CTE example, different instructional models could be applied here. For example, the support model may be ideal for many AP or IB students. They would attend their virtual class periods, but now in the building with staff support in person. At designated times, there could be one-to-one or small group support provided to those students in the building, using those teachers and additional staff. Or in the case of an AP science class, simultaneous instruction could have students participating in a lab in person while others engage in a virtual simulation from home. Or again, if there's a small class or a class where 100% of the students prefer in-person, a direct teaching model could be explored. Again, these examples are meant to show the different ways that the models could be applied to delivering programs based on the student and staff needs. So I'm going to go back to Dr. Moran, who'll explain a little bit more about these different variables, and now with a middle school example. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. If we could go to the next slide, please. All right, so determining which of the three instructional models to utilize is driven by different variables, as Mr. Murphy indicated. As you can see on this slide, it's driven by a formula of student needs plus staffing needs equals the selected in-person instructional experience. For this particular scenario, you can see that we have 24 sixth-grade students who've requested an in-person instructional experience. We recognize that the total number of sixth-grade students selecting an in-person instructional experience will likely be higher, but we are utilizing 24 students as an example of explaining how school leaders may select a specific model. These 24 sixth-grade students might be grouped together as a result of commonalities in their current schedules or that they share similar teachers. In this scenario, these students are assigned to the same English teacher. Within these 24 students, nine students receive ESOL services and six students demonstrated a decline in overall performance on the MAPR fall diagnostic, and when looking at their data over time on this assessment, they have had challenges with vocabulary acquisition. Given the number of students, their academic needs, and the content being taught, the school leaders determine that beyond the English teacher, the students also need the support of an ESOL teacher and a pair educator to support with providing a reading intervention for the students demonstrating needs with vocabulary acquisition. As a result of examining the students' needs and matching them with staffing, the school determines that they will utilize the simultaneous model with this group of 24 students. They make this decision because they have access to two teachers that have experienced co-teaching sixth grade and also have a solid understanding of how to utilize technology as a teaching tool. In their planning, the English teacher is selected to deliver the in-person content, and the ESOL teacher will remain virtual, supporting students with engaging in discussion, managing their participation virtually, or with the in-person group at specific, specific times during instruction. They will also support the English language development through their intentional planning of instruction and when they work with students in small groups. The important thing to note about this scenario is that with the 24 students requesting an in-person instructional experience and two teachers with matching certification, the school developed a rotation between in-person and virtual learning. One group of students will be Group A, the other Group B. Group A will come to school on Monday, Tuesday, while Group B is at home learning virtually. Then on Thursday, Friday, Group B will come to school for their in-person instructional experience, and Group A is at home learning virtually. Both groups of students will be at home on Wednesday, learning virtually in their current schedule, while the school is being cleaned and prepared for the next group of students to come to school. This could also potentially be implemented on an A week and then a B week. In thinking about the students' schedules, they may come into school for some courses that are delivered in a simultaneous model and others in a support model, where they are supervised but engaged in their virtual coursework. It is also important to note that these groups could be established by the school to best meet their learning needs. For example, the nine English language learners may be separated into two groups based on their needs and the opportunity for them to have exposure to proficient English speakers, whether they are in-person and virtual. The six students who exhibit the need for a reading intervention might come in one group to maximize staffing, so a pair educator can provide an intervention to that group for two days onsite. In addition to providing the reading intervention, the pair educator could support students with their academic needs during instruction, supervising students in providing support with ensuring safety procedures are being followed. The most important thing to emphasize with this model is that the team of teachers are working together to provide an equality of attention and that all 24 students that select an in-person instructional experience receive two days of in-person instruction while being purposefully engaged in virtual the other two days and all students remaining virtual on Wednesday. Next slide, please. On this slide, we show 24 students that have selected to have an in-person instructional experience. They have some similar needs to the previous scenario, but as a result of their grade level, the school decides that the support model is more appropriate to best support them, given they are in second grade. With 24 second-grade students, the school strategically places them into two classes of 12 students to adhere to health and safety guidelines. Both classes of 12 participate in the support model on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. To revisit the support model, the support model provides the opportunity for specific groups of students to work with staff onsite while they remain enrolled in their virtual classrooms. During the support model, a pair educator provides support to individual students as they receive instruction virtually, monitors their engagement, and during breaks, provides opportunities for social emotional learning through class discussions, peer-to-peer socialization, and creating a classroom community through team-building activities. During the course of the week, an ESOL teacher comes in multiple times during English Language Arts to provide support on English language development to the nine students. during English Language Arts to provide support on English language development to the nine students needing ESOL services. In addition, a pair educator comes to the classroom at scheduled times to provide interventions on phonics and foundational reading skills to students who demonstrated the need for support on the MAP-RF diagnostic. In this model, the instruction is heavily virtual, with adult support for supervision, structure, engagement, and fostering connections with and among students. At this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Dr. Nixon to share information about our support to schools as they plan for staffing these instructional models.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. Next slide, please? So as you've heard, there are several models and several staffing needs that are in the process of being identified. And OHRD stands ready with our partners in OTLS to identify what specific needs will be will be outlined and identified at our various schools. Our teams have already begun our recruitment efforts for staffing for the for the next school year, but we know that with the needs that have been determined now with our return-to-learn models, we have efforts that we are putting in place currently. So we have begun with targeted outreach to some of our retired teachers, looking at ways that we can reach out to our recent retired teachers and see if they are willing to come back and help us out for the remainder of the school year. We have been working diligently to make outreach efforts to our December graduates in an effort to offer open contracts to not only serve our needs for this current year, but to also support efforts for the 2122 recruiting year. We have done an all-call to our substitute teachers who hold a bachelor's degree, where we are able to offer conditional certification. We are looking at those opportunities as well. We have increased our online marketing and our virtual spaces with LinkedIn and Hulu, making sure that we are casting a wider net, looking at opportunities to hire teachers who perhaps live in other states to help us support distance learning as well. So I wanted just to underscore that our recruiting efforts are already underway for 2122, but we know that we can leverage that outreach and that recruitment to help the efforts that we need currently, so that once we have our return plans in place for January and for the spring semester, we're able to meet those needs. And our HR office is working very closely with our associate superintendents in OTLS to really identify what those specific needs are for schools. Next slide? And Ms. Evans, we will send it back to you for the discussion portion of the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much, and I will start with Mrs. Mandrowski.
Yeah, I just have two quick kind of concerns, questions. I still hear a lot of concerns or questions about the changing of schools and classrooms and teachers and things like that. And I know people, a lot of people are, were hoping to get more information about this before committing to how they want it to proceed, if we do open up options. Are we, is that, I'm assuming that that's all just based on space? Is that why we would be having those discussions?
Dr. Wilson, or Mr. Moran, I'm not, I'll turn it over to whoever's, Mr. Moran, to address that question.
Thanks, Dr. McKnight. So that's a, that's a great question, and certainly one that, you know, we, we, we understand the parents' concern, and I've heard that from, from parents as well. The, it's, it's not necessarily just space, it's the idea that with students coming back to school with certain models, they obviously will be in different classes. So, you know, we're going to make every attempt to maintain, you know, the student-teacher match. As we know, that, that's, that's a critical piece as those relationships have been developed. But it's simply just not something that we can guarantee. It's a large mathematical formula when you look at the, you know, staff returning and the student needs, and how we'll need to, need to mobilize our staff. So we, we are, we recognize it and are going to work with our schools to, you know, be creative and make it as much as possible, but, but it's just not something that we can say that we'll, we'll be able to do across the board.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I hope we can communicate that to parents who might be hesitating to fill in the choice option. I don't want to call it a survey, because whatever, but so that that might ease some of their concerns. And then the only other comment I have is just that I'm still getting a lot of concerns, and I'm mentioning this in reference to the slide with the updates on virtual learning for marking period two, that there's still a lot of concerns about the platforms and communications. And in your presentation, you even mentioned parent-teacher conferences, and I know we've heard from people who have, you know, Zoom issues or whatever else it might be, and just making sure that we're being flexible with how we're reaching out to our, our parents and our, and their community in different ways, whether it may be having a parent-teacher conference over the phone as opposed to on a Zoom call, or whatever it might be. And then, like I said, just continuing to be looking at the concerns we're hearing about with the platforms, the different platforms. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Wolf. Okay, now, Mrs. O'Neill?
Yes, I, Mr. Murphy, I'm happy that you're examining the workload for our high school students, because I had heard from lots of people about students being slammed with the amount of work. And, you know, it is, the mental health challenges of the pandemic may also be contributing to the, our students' ability to stay on task. And, but I had heard that the other piece is about pacing for AP and IB courses that the current schedule does not, it doesn't seem to be really very adequate in making it through the expected curriculum expectations for AP and IB. So any support or monitoring of that is also important. And I appreciate everybody's work in researching these schedules. I just have to say, I'm very concerned, you know, looking almost two months out at January 12. I mean, I think two months ago, if any of us had been talking about this, we could not possibly have anticipated where we would be today in the state of Maryland with spikes, although I, I read the book about the 1918 pandemic, the Great Influenza. And this is sort of following the pattern that occurred in 1918 with the surge in the late fall. And I'm very concerned about raising unrealistic expectations that everything is going to necessarily come off as we've outlined it, because none of us can anticipate what the next two months will be like. So I, I'm, I think it's wise, or it's prudent to have disclaimers that we will constantly monitor the health and safety measures, but I, I'm really worried just watching the evening news.
Okay. Dr. Daka, did you have any comments, questions?
Oh, just that I think the secondary level is very ambitious in mixing virtual with in-person and having power educator. I think that's going to be very involved. And I know that you'll be refining that as you find out how many students want one thing or another. But anyhow, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Silvestri?
Mr. Murphy, about the, the feedback that you're getting about the secondary pacing and, and grading, is that, is that because students have to learn more material on their own? Because we're not in front of teachers as much? Just, I'm just trying to understand what the, what's the problem we're trying to solve?
Good question. In, in large part, it's, it's the, the reduction in instructional time. That, you know, the, in an average week at the secondary level, teachers have two full classes a week, unlike what they may be used to, which is five. So they're particularly in a subject like AP, where we gave that example earlier, there is a, a, a heavy load of work that students are experiencing that they are engaged in while they're not in class asynchronously. And that, the feedback that we're getting is it's, it is, is excessive. And so we're trying to find ways to provide some relief to our students who are experiencing that, as well as support to our teachers who are planning the instruction. I will say that, you know, this also is an example of something that constantly evolves. Just today, the College Board put out a survey of all teachers across the country, because they're hearing this across the board, of the difficulty in getting, getting through a full AP curriculum, given the instructional condition. So what we are examining in the short term are some of those grading practices, like how many assignments students have in a marking period and how deadlines are handled. But as we approach the second semester, also these questions about the, the, the way the content is laid out, the pacing, as well as assessments. And so, as well as the schedule and the way the day-to-day instructional schedule looks and feels for students and teachers, that remains sort of a, a constant cycle of gathering feedback and making adjustments as we go.
Thank you.
Ms. Silvestri, just to go back for just a second, I think the biggest premise we're managing here is just the translation of learning in a virtual environment. Although many of these students who are AP students in classes, you know, often come in and, and can do a lot of work independently, it's, it is still the, the, the very different experience for them in which however they get the support that's meaningful to them in their learning, it's different from all of the options in the way that they receive that report when we're in person. So it, it's just reconciliation of that. Ms. O'Neill mentioned a very important point earlier, which we heard from some of our students, which is, you know, the, the load just feels a lot heavier, given that they, they have to do much of this. Although it's not independent, it's different in the way that they're learning because it's virtual. So just trying to acknowledge that. And I also want to say, this has been an ongoing conversation, Dr. Wilson has been having with the principals, particularly at the secondary level, of how are we working with our students at the high school level to address this very need? Because many of them probably were able to handle things at much more of an independent level when they were having an in-person experience. Now it's a, you know, it's that combined with learning style and how that's being adjusted through the whole virtual experience. So we're working on both, and, and I appreciate our students bringing forward that this is something that they, they are grappling with so that we can be responsive. So I'm glad, again, emphasizing Dr. Wilson's work, the principals around that, high school principals particularly.
Right. And if I may, you know, it really is the AP piece and the IB piece are an excellent example in my mind of trying to do a traditional school inside a virtual platform, because certainly that content and that delivery and the assignments were not structured to be delivered in that format. And I think it's a perfect example when we think about trying to do what's traditional in the environment we're in right now. And principals have been very candid about this. Scott, and Scott's team, you know, are, are definitely trying to be responsive to that. And we've heard from our middle school principals, in particular on math, and we're trying to be responsive to that. We have a follow-up meeting with them later this week. And, you know, there's enough hardships, we want to ease where we can, but we also know the importance of moving our students along. It within the, 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 the structures that we have in place, knowing that that social and emotional piece is critically important as well. So thank you for raising these issues. Mr. Asante?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation thus far. I have two questions. The first, sort of building off of Ms. Mandrowski's point about students moving around. So if at School A, a large number of students want to return in-person, and at School B, a lesser amount want to return, would some students from School A be moved to School B for the time being in order to accommodate that? Or would it continue to be restricted by each individual school?
Mr. Asante, it's not likely that we're going to open 208 buildings when we move back in. And so as we look at the demand for school, then we're going to have to think about how that works across all of our high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools. But, and, and we have, you know, the rolling effort to make sure the school is completely prepared for this in terms of HVAC and all of those factors. And so we will just continue to build up and out as we are able to move forward with this and make sure that we are serving our students and also attending very closely to the health and safety protocols.
All right. And then my second question, I'm still, I guess I'm having trouble wrapping my mind around how the different models are being chosen. Just to clarify, is it per, like, subject or per student need? So would, like, a student have the same model for all their classes, or would it be a different model for each individual class?
They're likely not to have, especially at the secondary level, all the same model for all classes. And it'll be based on developmental levels, so the chronological age and the learning level of the student, on the subject area, on the facility arrangement, on the staffing. All of those things will have to come together. As we know, the ratio of students who are in an all-virtual platform versus a combination platform for schools to work directly with central office departments to support schools in designing those. I was meeting with a principal this morning at a school. For the first time in months, I sat, you know, eight feet away, and we talked. And he and I were talking about just those sorts of issues. And we have to understand that our schools and other people in our schools, the teachers, teacher leaders, and administrators, and support officials, they know their school. And when they get those lists of students, they know the needs of those students, and they will create structures, just like they do in an all-physical world, to meet the needs of those students to the very best of their ability, given the constraints that we're all living under.
So then I guess looking at the sixth-grade example, where some students, for the English class, where some students have it virtual for half the week and some are in-person for half the week. So there's the chance then that you'd have classes that are virtual, while you also have classes that are in-person on the same day? Would you, so would they be do, would that, for those virtual classes be done through the support model where they're in the school building taking their virtual classes, but then they would go to another place for their in-person lessons? All right.
Or right in the same realm, just the period shifts. You know, because one of our goals is to keep cohorts of students together to the greatest degree possible and adults with the, the students, because we want to be very aware of that mix of human beings in a school increases the likelihood of transmission if somebody does bring the virus into the school. If they visit 10 classes in a day, that's going to be very different than if they visit one or two. And so we have to think about all of those things. It's very much a matrix and a Rubik's Cube, all put together, a three-dimensional jigsaw puzzle. And when you think about all the pieces that have to be considered.
And on that point also, Mr. Asante, to Dr. Smith's analogy about the Rubik's Cubes, the Rubik's Cube, one part that we will also consider in this is, what courses is it actually going to be better to, to, to facilitate for students in a virtual environment versus in-person? We've been having that conversation internally and just looking at, you know, which courses do we find from our students and the interactions with them, and just what we know about teaching and learning are going to be more beneficial? Because we may have to, in the scheduling in different schools and things, about what those courses are for students who are coming in person, also make a determination about the schedule based on that. So lots of things here in the equation of how we're going to come out on the side of trying to figure out what's best for the students in each school, given the resources that we have.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. That helps a lot.
I was going to, clarification at the end, or this, this comment at the end, but I'll make it now, because I, I think if it's perfectly with this conversation and the questions you're asking, we are simultaneously planning in the moment, we're talking to you right now about what's going to happen next. We're, we're thinking for two, three, four, five, six months out, and then we're thinking long-term, because the effects of this are not going to go away, nor are some of the shifts that we are making now, like the all-virtual issue for some students for the foreseeable future. And so we're, we're thinking about what needs to happen today so we can start, you know, special education assessments in, in December. We can start small groups in January, you know, given all the constraints, if we can do that. What needs to happen as we start second semester? What will, what will it look like as we go through third marking period? If we can continue to expand and grow our service within buildings? And then And then, what is, what do the next, literally, two and a half years look like? What do we do second semester of this year to make next school year and the year after us absolutely as effective and useful and productive for students over the next two or three years, who've had a tremendous disruption to their education? A tremendous disruption, and it's happened to everyone. And so we were trying to think all of those ways in all of those directions right now, because the decisions we make today and three months from now will affect what happens with students next, August and September and October, and as we move forward. And so all of those things are being done in layers and systems right now across the school district.
Okay. Ms. Dixon?
Yeah. So I want to thank you all for the presentation and also for the evidence that you have put so much thought into this and, you know, are meticulously trying to think of all scenarios. And I think that, you know, Mrs. O'Neal's point about the time after the pandemic of 1918 and how much time it took, you know, to get back to normal, you know, is right on. But I think, you know, with trying to game out with all of these hypotheticals, I'm not sure how, you know, useful that is, because this is very complex work. And, you know, the fact that the school system is so large, you know, 160, you know, 1,000 students, makes it very, very difficult. So I think going forward, you know, and, you know, whenever students can return, you're all going to have to be very flexible, and I think very, very kind to yourselves, because we've never done this before. You know, we've, you know, not in recent times. And I think, as, you know, Pat was saying, even though that was a different time, it's going to take time to get back into, you know, I don't know that we'll ever be normal again, but, you know, in terms of what folks are used to. But I certainly would urge you, you know, to do that, and that parents be patient, you know, with the system. And certainly, you know, we appreciate all the work that, you know, teachers and staff are doing. And to the students, who are just so resilient during this time, we really appreciate you as well. So, but thank you very much. And I hope that this vaccine, you know, works out. You know, we have two prospects now in that, you know, we'll pray on that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm looking around to my colleagues. Are there any more questions, Mrs. O'Neal? Yep? Oh, no, you didn't mean, no. I forgot my own thumb, I gave a signal last time. Does that mean you don't have any questions? Okay. All right. All right.
Yes, I do.
Okay. I was telling you.
I, you know, I appreciate Jeanette referencing what I had said earlier. The secret, this is not just us dealing with this situation. The Secretary General of the UN in August said, "This is a worldwide educational catastrophe for children." And yes, you know, I love history. The 1918 pandemic went on, off and on, in waves through 1920. Now, they never did develop a vaccine, you know? Hopefully, we will have a vaccine. Modern medicine has progressed significantly. But we've had a tremendous disruption for our children. And people who have open schools are now whiplashing and backtracking and closing schools because of the spikes. You know, I think it is something that we all have to continue to work through. I do believe we all, as a community, as a state, as a nation, have to prioritize schools, because there is an economic imperative for our children's future. But, you know, I do think everybody has to give some grace, because this is really hard. And I can't even imagine how many hours you all put in to this effort and needing to make changes and needing to monitor the metrics which are ever-evolving. You know, I'm optimistic, but just as you were speaking about the scheduling, I'm thinking, okay, so if we have kids on alternating weeks at some schools and kids on a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday schedule at others, what about transportation? That's a complex issue on top of just planning within a school building. So I thank everyone for all of their efforts and, you know, we're, everybody across the world, for the most part, is in the same boat that we are, maybe not New Zealand, but, you know, and they're more isolated and they've had strict protocols, but it's just very difficult.
Okay. So we have a few more slides, and I think I'm gonna let them, I'm gonna let you all get through all the rest of the slides, and then we'll go around and ask questions, and then we'll, we should be ready to end. So with that, I'll turn it back over.
Mr. Turner, we'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you. And if we can pull up the slides, please. As always, we just want to remind the community that we are engaged in feedback from you. It helps us shape our plan to make sure that we have the best plan available to you. So we always want to hear from you. MCPSSubmitfeedback.org will allow you to send your feedback directly to us, which we read and take into account and respond to. Just a reminder, please, 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 we can't say enough, fill out this survey so that we can make really thoughtful and data-driven decisions about what models to use as we plan for a safe eventual return to in-person instruction. You will receive postcards, you will receive emails, you will receive phone calls and text messages, you will see us in your social media feed, you will see ads from us. I know that's overwhelming, but because we need your information, please tell your friends, please tell your family, pass the news on, share it in your social media accounts. We can't stress this enough. So we really appreciate all the feedback we've gotten so far, and we really look forward to getting all this data. And so next slide. And with all that, again, you can use the feedback form, you can also use our email account, MCPSNfo@mcpSMD.org. And we'll turn it back over to the board for final discussion.
Do we want to go ahead and let Dr. Sullivan go ahead with athletics?
Yes, please. Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Evans and Mr. Turner. Good afternoon, Dr. Smith, Dr. McKnight, and board members. I'm pleased to provide some updates and MCPS Athletics with you. First, I'd like to start with our virtual program. We've had a very successful start to the school year with virtual athletics, something we have not done before, but I'd like to say are doing very well. We have approximately 10,000 high school students and 2,000 middle school students that have participated in our program across the fall and winter seasons. So we're wrapping up the winter seasons here at the middle school level, and high school will wrap up the virtual winter season shortly after Thanksgiving. And our spring seasons are coming soon. And I want to take a moment to just commend all of the stakeholders in our program for their efforts, going back to August and the planning, and then just the implementation and the engagement of our student athletes, of our coaches, and of our speakers. We've had an all-star cast of speakers that have been able to engage with our students. It's been outstanding. And as I transition into some of our efforts around the planning for in-person, one of those speakers, Alan Stein Jr., who's a Watkins Mill alum, he's also an NBA trainer, shared with our student athletes yesterday, "It's better to be prepared for something that may not happen than to be unprepared for something that does happen." And I think this really holds true to us in athletics, like other things in our school system, just the nature of COVID-19, the ever-changing dynamics. So our COVID-19 Task Force for MCPS Athletics, this is the group that's been meeting since June to plan for the in-person engagement of our program. And this group has representation from multiple stakeholders across MCPS and departments to really capture the collective voice, you know, from transportation to facilities to our athletic trainers, certainly our coaches and our athletic specialists, but also includes representation from DHHS and the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. So we get the most up-to-date insight and guidance in terms of our planning. And it's important to note that we are prepared for, we do not know what the future will bring, but the messaging of our program from our office to all of our stakeholders is, be prepared. And that's where we are. We are prepared for wherever that may go. Next slide, please. Our in-person operations are driven by our Return to Raise Plan, and this is a nice play on our acronym, our RAISE core value acronym, you know, our Return to Play Plan. And it's important to note that our planning for when, if, you know, that when that opportunity arises, that our plan will align with the CDC, the guidance, as well as MSD and our State Athletic Association, the Maryland Public Secondary Schools Athletic Association, and of course, the Montgomery County Guidelines for Youth Sports. So we want to make sure that we're incorporating all of that information into the planning for our in-person programming. I also want to share that, you know, I host a weekly meeting of colleagues around the 24 school districts in Maryland. Each week, we are talking and sharing information. And I think that's important to note that, you know, we're all learning from each other, and we're in ongoing communication about what's happening. I also want to share that we have, my colleagues in Northern Virginia, we have been meeting on a regular basis to really work well together and plan together. And then we're all, you know, I'm sure you see at all levels of athletics, the dynamics and the impact of COVID-19 and what it's having. So again, I want to share that planning that has been occurring and that when that opportunity comes, that our plan will be ready to go. It's also important to note that our activities, you know, are going to be returning incrementally. You know, conditioning and training, skill-based activities, team-based practices would be the start, depending on where we enter in to that calendar and to those activities. And it's also important to note that competition, if health metrics allow for competition, that we're really going to be focusing in on schools and teams competing within the same geographic area within the county. So as the 14th largest district in the country, we're big. And so we need to really think of this as trying to keep, minimize the travel, minimize risks. So we have reimagined divisions and other things that may occur down the road to really focus in on keeping things geographically based and really rethinking how we schedule when that opportunity arises. And lastly, in-person activities will return when the health metrics allow and in alignment with the return to students to schools. So we know, as, you know, started with Governor Hogan's press conference and throughout this, you know, that asterisk of the health metrics, and we know where that direction is, but I think that the take-home message for us in MCPS Athletics is that we are going to be ready. We're going to be ready to go and to provide the best opportunity for our student athletes, and that student athletes will be eligible to participate in our program, regardless of the option that they select in terms of the virtual or the in-person options. So we're excited to bring that program back when the time comes. And I will turn things over to my colleague, Mrs. Cherry, to provide some updates about extracurricular activities.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Can we have the next slide, please? So our extracurricular activities program continues to build and thrive during this time. To date, we actually have an update. We've successfully moved 1,630 extracurricular activities to a fully virtual platform. Our students and our schools continue to identify needs and areas of interest to grow programs, and our schools have been putting in energy and effort to develop programs to create more offerings for our students after the school day ends. Our students are encouraged to go in to look at our MCPS Student Engagement webpage for student leadership service and extracurricular activities to identify some of these new opportunities that are existing in their schools and to connect with the staff members that serve and lead them. Being able to transition our program directly to a virtual platform has had a bit of a little challenge here, where we had to think through, what are some of the things that our students wish to host in a traditional time period through a virtual platform? For example, we've had to look at and collaborate with one another across offices and schools to identify a process for virtual field trips, if you will, to ensure that there is a safe process for our students to be able to engage in meetings or competitions that might be held on a non-MCPS virtual platform or amongst other students that are outside of our district, whether it's across the state or within our region. For instance, this past weekend, we had student leaders from across MCPS attend the Maryland Association of Student Council's Fall Leadership Conference. And so being able to engage in a non-MCPS platform and to meet with a network amongst student leaders across the district was a perfect example of this kind of challenge and change and alteration that we've made to accommodate this experience. But we also have many others, like our debate tournaments or our quiz bowl competitions, where our students will compete not only against MCPS students, but against other students across the state and within our region. So we're very, very glad to have this new process in place to allow for these traditional experiences to still exist in this virtual platform. Until the health metrics allow, we keep hearing these words, right? Our virtual extracurricular activities are growing more comfortable day by day in this space. And so while we are always thinking and are cognizant of that, we very much wish to be back with our students and to host these programs and experiences in person. So if I could have the next slide, please. Looking at the future state of our extracurricular activities programs, Dr. Randy Sullivan, a director in the Curriculum and Instructional Programs Office, as well as myself, have been participants in Dr. Sullivan's COVID-19 Task Force, representing the voice and thinking through the impact of the information that we learn through that team and how it has an impact on extracurricular activities. As a result, we've created a guidance document that's very much in alignment with the COVID-19 Task Force document about that return to in-person extracurricular activities. It is in alignment with CDC, with, of course, the Maryland State Department of Education and Montgomery County, and of course, the expectations here in Montgomery County Public Schools. While this document is still in progress, most of it is built out because it is in alignment with the COVID-19 Task Force documents, but there are a few components that we need to build out, because extracurricular activities are wide and vast. And so we want to ensure that we have input from some of our stakeholders who are currently have had one month behind them, or a little over a month of experience with this, and then wanting to look at how that impacts them with the transition back to school. As a result, we will be re-engaging and expanding our ECA think tank team. Over the summer, it involved our athletic specialists and some of our coaches, STEM sponsors, SGA sponsors, some of our administrators, our fine arts directors. But as we are now into the second quarter, we are looking to expand that team to include, where we now have an ECA administrator in each school that serves to be a point of contact, and then an array of other extracurricular activity sponsors to help support us to ensure that we're thinking of every possible component as it impacts. So we're looking for those potential exceptions, where we might want to re-engage them as we bring students back to the building, even in small groups, and consider what accommodations might be needed in that time. I'll leave you with one example. Dr. Rumpf and I had participated in two-site visits in a local district, a neighboring district, where we looked through the lens of athletics, extracurricular activities, and most specifically, we looked at the marching band. The marching band has the traditional space of using outside in their parking lots, on additional fields if their school base allows. if their school base allows, um, to be able to host that experience. And we not identified not only how they were doing their check-in and safety protocols for that return, but we recognized the safety accommodations that they made. For instance, for those marching band participants, because many of the instruments, um, you know, provide aerosols, if you will, the students were provided with, um, a special overlap face mask and bell covers, which is basically a mask for the end of their instrument. At approximately ten dollars a piece for those two items, that's twenty dollars per person. Um, I wanted to give you just an idea of what that cost might be in terms of those accommodations. And this, you know, when you think about our students in this particular example with the marching band, that's an impact that might happen for the instructional, um, day during their courses as well as their co-curricular and extracurricular activities. So this is just one example of, uh, one of those extracurricular activities to which we were thinking about those safety accommodations. We very much wish to have our students back into our extracurricular programs and athletics. And, um, we look forward to being ready and having these programs ready for our students once we're very much allowed. So I'll pause and, and turn it back over to Ms. Evans.
Thank you. Um, so I will start with, um, Dr. Daca, did you have any questions, comments, what you just heard and?
Questions, I'm staying out of athletics.
Okay. So I'm gonna ask board members just to give me a thumbs up if you have a question. Okay. All right. So I see two thumbs. That's all I see. Okay. Ms. Dixon and then Ms. Sevstra.
So, uh, just want to say, uh, thank you to, uh, Shella Cherry and, uh, Jeff Sullivan for the work that they've done on athletics and, uh, extracurricular, uh, activities. Uh, I can't wait, uh, to go back to seeing some girls' basketball games, uh, whenever that's going to occur. But, uh, you know, I do want to mention that. So one of the things that has really, um, uh, concerned me is that, um, who knew, uh, when we left in March that, uh, we would go through the rest of my term on the board on Zoom. Uh, you know, initially I resisted, uh, this Zoom and then after a couple of meetings, I'm like, okay, I'll have to get on with this. But, uh, and that, uh, haven't had, uh, the opportunity to sit next to Nick Asante uh, at all. And, uh, I really feel like, you know, I've lost out, uh, you know, in that vein. But one of the things I always noticed in terms of our smobs was that, you know, they would come in July and then in November and December, you know, we'd start talking about, you know, the smob convention, uh, you know, which would replace them. And so I'm just wondering, uh, are we gonna keep to that schedule? Or are we gonna let Nick be there a little bit longer before we start that process? I feel, you know, really bad that, uh, you know, his tenure has been marked by this pandemic. So I was just wondering, uh, Shella, if you've thought about that. Um, and usually we know who the, uh, people are, the students are, who want to succeed the smob. But I don't have a clue, uh, really about that now. Are, are you gonna, uh, you know, maintain that schedule, Shella? Or are we gonna do something different? Have you thought about it?
Have I thought about it? It has been sitting with me, um, since our election. As you recall, um, traditionally it was, um, held in April. And last year, we had four different plans for the election as the deadline for returning to schools had changed. And so that has been very much a part of our thinking. And I was able to meet with the Special Elections Committee students last year um, to kind of debrief about how we ended the year and how it's evolved into this year. We have a new group of students with the Special Elections Committee and we are very much, um, working to plan. Um, I'm grateful for this question because there are a couple of things, um, worth mentioning. The Special Elections Committee is actually hosting on, uh, December nineteenth, sorry, November nineteenth, um, just two days away, a smob one-on-one, um, experience where we have three of our former smobs coming back. Uh, Mr. Post, Ms. Tataconda and, uh, Mr. Timbite will be joining, um, the students. We also have two of our former finalists, um, Zoe Tishayev and Vicky Kitter, who will also be returning. And so that experience will be publicized to the, um, greater whole. So our students can get an idea of what is the smob one-on-one, you know, who is the smob, what is the role? And how does one, um, follow that process and those protocols in order to become the next candidate? Um, we also have been preparing for, um, basically two NOMCons and two elections. So the NOMCon is what we, um, lovingly call the nominating convention. So we're prepared for an in-person, should that be allowed. Um, that we are also preparing for a, um, virtual experience through our Zoom webinar process. And so we've aligned our protocols to outline both of those so that we could still hold to the timeline. Uh, because we want to be able to provide the students with enough time to campaign. And then, of course, have the election again in April, again, uh, online election in school or an online election virtually. Um, regard, you know, whether, um, we're allowed to. And to that point, so that we still have the elections in April and then we have this transition time where the new student member would be able to transition, um, and learn from, uh, Mr. Asante directly.
Right. So, uh, Nick, I think you should, uh, weigh in with all of this going forward and, you know, tell everybody if you don't want to leave, okay? Thank you.
I'm sure Nick wants to go to college. I don't think he plans on hanging out here too much longer. But we'll see. Yeah. Okay. So Ms. Sevstra.
Um, thank you. I think this is the end of the presentation. I don't have anything specific about athletics.
Carla, you're on mute. You're on mute.
I was very, getting very profound there. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, I don't have any comments on the last section of the presentation, but I just wanted to, um, share some closing comments from what we've heard today. And I, I wanted to say that, um, you've put together an excellent reopening plan. Um, it's hard to be optimistic about its implementation when we see the COVID rates, uh, rising exponentially and, you know, the county council and executive are talking about shutting down again the county. And so, um, you know, I, I want, um, we all want our staff and our students to be safe. And that is our number one priority and I recognize that. Um, again, we have a solid plan and I think you've done a great job with that. Um, we all get the emails from parents for whom the online program is not working. And so, um, I hope that in future meetings, we can also hear about what improvements we are making to the online, uh, model from some of the feedback that we've gotten. And that we, we really look at the groups, small groups for whom online is really not working. You know, Dr. Smith all often tells us about the number of students that have cut and gone off the grid, especially in elementary school. And that really breaks my heart because I know that for many of them, private school is not an option. Homeschool is not an option. And so I just ask us that, um, recognizing that we have to be safe, recognizing that the COVID rates are going in the wrong direction, that we look at those small groups who are really not learning and just try to be, just try to think creatively about what we could do for them. Small, smaller than what we thought even before, to date. Again, voluntarily and so forth. So those are just sort of my, my closing comments. I want to make sure that, um, just to congratulate you for an excellent plan. I want to emphasize that everyone needs to be safe, parents, families and students. And that we, um, just keep an open mind about what we could do for those that are not learning. Thank you.
Sure. Um, so, uh, I'll say, yeah, I was gonna make a comment. I was gonna thank, um, Mrs. Cherry and Dr. Sullivan for their presentation. We get emails that say we thank the staff too much, but I just really think that in a time where we've essentially changed how we are teaching our students, that I don't know how you can come on here and not thank you for all your efforts to do what's been done up until today. So Mrs. Cherry mentioned that they've, that they've taken over fifteen hundred extracurricular activities on, online, which I think is amazing. Dr. Sullivan, I'll just say I have two athletes in my house and you all have done a great job at virtually engaging the students with the panel discussions with, you know, former athletes to, I don't know how the coaches got, and they went out running yesterday, um, at five o'clock, it was a little bit dark and they came back panting. So, I mean, they're, they are engaged enough to where they feel compelled to go out and do whatever they can do to stay in shape. And it's because of all the hard work that our, um, athletic directors are doing under the guys, Dr. Sullivan, to make certain that be, be, until we return to in-person, that our students are still able to, um, engage in some type of athletics. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. And then I will, um, allow my colleague, Mrs. Madraski, to make another comment. But, um, just for the public, we will continue to thank them because we do, we are appreciative of the work that's happening for all of our, um, one hundred and sixty-one thousand students. So go ahead, Mrs. Madraski.
Thank you. I'll be really quick. I just want to reiterate, um, Ms. Sevstra's comments. I was thinking about the exact same thing, actually, during this special education presentation and just, um, in terms of, you know, some kids that may not have needed, um, I E P services or, or special accommodations um, in the regular classroom may actually need extra supports during this type of online learning, um, where it's really not working for them. So, um, the more that we can look at ways of helping support our students who are struggling, the better, um, off we will all be. Um, so I want to thank you for bringing that point up and just say I second that. And thank you all for the presentation and all the work that you're doing. I agree, this is a great, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm pleased with the plan in place. But, um, you know, considering the situation, it may be a while before we are able to implement it. So I really want to make sure we're supporting everybody who is struggling at home. So thank you.
Okay. So if no one else wants to make a comment, Dr. Smith, if you don't have any final thoughts, then, um, we will go ahead and end this work session and just say thank you again and we'll see each other back on November the nineteenth, this Thursday, for our facilities and boundaries decision. Okay. Take care, everybody. Have a good night.